Okay. Everybody ready? All right. Okay. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming. It is seven o'clock and I call the meeting of the Plymouth School Committee to order. If you could join me for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the God in the United States of America. The material for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up, we have our student representatives. And let's go with Plymouth North first. And David Christopher Brown is here. Whenever you're ready.
All right. So, um, last Wednesday, April fifth, Plymouth North High School welcomed six hundred students and advisors at North for the Spring C Mass Student Council Conference. A lot of students were involved from Plymouth North. We had over fifty kids. And nine groups from North led different workshops. And sixty kids moved people around the building. And Plymouth North, Gabby Lopes was elected C Mass Vice President. And Adam Halpern had a really great and courageous goodbye speech as a C Mass President. Plymouth North National Honor Society traveled the Holy Cross last Thursday to attend the M S A A National Honor Society State Conference. At the conference, our chapter of the National Honor Society was awarded the commended chapter award for their work in the community, which they had a very unique project, which was a pirate-themed escape room for different elementary schools. And so all the members of the National Honor Society took part in the project. And in total, over two hundred fifty elementary school students were able to take part in the escape room. Our interact club had its first annual benefit show on Thursday, March thirty first. It was a really big success. There were over three hundred people in attendance, including representatives from Lucy's Love Bus, which is a Massachusetts nonprofit that the interact students chose to be the beneficiary of the event. There were thirteen local businesses that donated to the event. And with a lot of donations that added up to twenty eight hundred dollars. There were nineteen different student acts. And a lot of people in the audience and people were really, really enjoyed the event. And they raised five thousand dollars for Lucy's Love Bus. And all students involved had a really good time and put on a really good show to deliver joy and comfort to families whose children were suffering with cancer. Seniors, the senior dinner dance is Tuesday, May thirtieth, at Indian Pond in Kingston. Tickets are available for purchase until Friday, the fourteenth, so this Friday, at room three thirty-one after school each day. And the cost per person is seventy dollars. April twelfth, this Wednesday, juniors have SAT testing if they've been already previously signed up. Junior prom is May twenty-sixth at Lake Peron Rentham. And tickets are also available until Friday in Miss McWherter's room, which is room three twenty-one. After school only. And guest forms are available in room three twenty-one or on the Google Classroom. Tickets are eighty-five dollars and see Miss McWherter or member of the prom committee if you have any questions. Bus applications for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year will be sent home electronically this Friday, April fourteenth. If you want to take advantage of the discounted rate, pay by the end of the school year. And each unit must fill in an application to confirm that they are a bus rider or if they're a walker or driven to school. Student travel opportunity, there are spots still for the twenty twenty-four April vacation Southern Spain trip. If Spanish students are interested, you can go see Mr. Fabian in room three thirty-five or Miss J B in room three thirty-eight for the opportunity to go to Spain and sign up quickly because spots are filling up. At spring sports, spring sports have started. And the schedule is on Arbiter Live, which you can get via the Plymouth North website or the parent page. And then report cards were sent home last Thursday. April vacation is next week. And Saturday, the thirtieth, we have the Healthy Plymouth Community Fair at Plymouth North High School. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Next up, we have Maya DePaul from Plymouth South High School.
So it is exciting to see travel again in our schools. And we want to wish safe travels to our many groups who are traveling next week. The student trip to France, the V P A students heading to Washington, D.C., the DECA students competing in Florida, and the baseball team who's headed to Dodger Town. Good luck to all. On Wednesday this week, juniors will be participating in S A Ds during the school day. Prom tickets are in the final week of sales and the prom will be held on May twelfth. Grade ten students participated in the English M Cast at the end of March and will be taking their math M Cast in May. Our musical Mamma Mia is currently selling tickets for their performances the weekend of May fifth and May sixth. We look forward to this fantastic production. Congratulations to Senior Harry Otino, who has been selected to play in the Elite Shriners Football Game in June of this year. The Shriners game raises funds for the Shriners Burn Institution and features the best players in Massachusetts. Our spring sports teams are underway and there are games, matches, and meets daily after school at South. The captain's breakfast will also be held Thursday at South at eight thirty a.m. The World Language Honor Society had their second annual induction ceremony last week and inducted new members to the French and Spanish honor societies. Congratulations to Senior Taylor Gendron, who will be attending the M A V A Scholar Dinner on Thursday night at Plymouth South High School, as the Plymouth South High School rep at Mechanics Hall in Worcester. End of the year activities are about to begin and will start with the art gala on April twenty-seventh at five o'clock at South. We encourage everyone to review the end of the year events and stop by at any time. Invitations will be out after vacation and graduation, for graduation and our award ceremonies. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments for our student representatives? Great. Thank you very much. Next up, we have comments from the general public. And I'm going to read my, we have one person that's going to speak. I'm going to read my disclaimer first and then we'll call her up. The Plymouth School Committee welcomes the opportunity to learn about concerns and opinions of Plymouth residents, input from students and parents and guardians within Plymouth Public Schools is especially important to the school committee. Public comment is a part of the school committee agenda and not an opportunity for discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion or concern on issues within the school committee's authority and scope. The public comments segment shall at the sole discretion of the school committee chairperson and in most instances, instances will not exceed thirty minutes in total. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to present their material and must begin their comments by stating their name and address. Topics for discussion should be limited to those items within the school committee's scope of authority. The authority of the school committee primarily concerns the review and approval of the budget of the district's public schools, the performance of the superintendent, and the educational goals and policies of the district's public schools. Public comments and complaints regarding school personnel or students are prohibited. Comments made during the public comment portion of the meeting do not necessarily reflect the views or positions of the Plymouth School Committee or individual committee members. And with that being said, we have Kelly Scriven. Okay, thank you. If you want to just come up, state your name and address and you have three minutes. You can stand if you want to, but you, you need to speak into the microphone or else it won't, they won't hear you at home.
Kelly Scriven. And I'm from Twenty Farnham Drive in Plymouth, Mass. And I've only been a resident of Plymouth for five years now. So I'm assuming that my subject was okay to talk about because I did send an email.
To?
To address school shootings and safety of our.
Yes, yes. I'm sorry. I, I got a couple emails. I know I respond to.
So three minutes isn't a lot of time. I have been public speaking for twenty years in front of thousands of people. But when I see a small group, I get a little nervous.
I hear you.
Bear with me. Basically, I've been the type of person that when you get frustrated, get busy. And I'm just really frustrated. I'm, I'm scared to death. I'm very concerned about what's going on in the world at schools, as I'm sure all of you are and all parents. I'm a grandparent. I have two daughters at West Elementary in Plymouth. And I have a grandson in New Jersey. I'm here because I just can't sit by and do nothing anymore. And I think that's the consensus of a lot of people. They all just watch the news and say, what can we do? What can we do? I felt the same way about the Barnum and Bailey Circus and I protested and there are no circuses anymore. So I did something, right? I just, I've always been concerned about the safety and security outside of the school property. I don't know if it's been discussed before. I don't know if it's ever been presented before. But to me, common sense, that's been a concern of mine. I was really happy to hear that when I did email that, you know, you all take the safety of the school of utmost importance and that you do have meetings in private. I thought, and for very good reason, and that made me feel so great. I thought that was really smart. I believe you have one field officer for every school in Plymouth. And because I can't ask questions and you can't answer.
It's going to be addressed, I think, later on in the.
Yes, I'm sorry. We don't usually dialogue, but yes, I'll be presenting this evening. And I think I emailed you.
Yes, and I heard that, so I'm staying, yes. I was happy to hear that because I have a teacher friend in Quincy and she said it's one field officer for like five schools. Somebody in New Hampshire was one for seven, so I think that's great news. I was just concerned always about the security outside the building. I didn't know, parents volunteer for everything. For, to raise money for hockey, for bingo, for school trips. I didn't know if there could ever be a committee that could be formed where people would volunteer, I would be one of them, to stay outside the school. I know I'm not a trained officer. I'm not a trained personnel. But just another set of eyes, just another set of eyes in school, outside the school. If we do see something that we could be in, in conjunction with the field officer, maybe like serve some sort of committee. I don't know. My daughter said, Mom, people aren't going to go to school when they send their kids to school so they can go to work. She said, they're just not going to do it. But you never know. I'm also concerned about the safety of the structure of the building. I know there was a professional firearms expert on the news the other night. And he was talking that wood doors and steel doors just don't cave in like they do in the movies. And if you look at most school entrances, there's glass surrounding the doors, which we've seen so sadly.
Minutes is, if you want to just finish it up real quick.
It's just that, you know, intruders can enter so quickly. And then, you know, and then I'm here, well, you have to be buzzed in and I won't even, you know. So that just concerns me. And I, so, but I don't know how to help because we don't know what the protocol is.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Just some of my concerns.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Can I come back every week and talk to students?
If you want, as long as it's something different every week. Not the same thing over and over again. All right, great. So, um, thank you. That's all that we had. So next, we have out of town overnight international field trips. And I'm seeing Mr. Caples coming up.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Mike Capel.
Julia McBride.
Julia is the musical director of Spectrum. And we are here to present for your approval an overnight out of town field trip to New York City from April twenty-seventh to April twenty-ninth. It's very last minute. I think you understand the background where they won the Northeast, Northeast Regional in Worcester a couple of weeks ago. And so they were, they placed first and now they're moving on to the international championship. There are eight groups left. Side note, they are the only all-female identifying group in the top eight. So that means treble voices. It's pretty special. So it's a pretty quick trip going down, two nights, one performance. And the girls, the young ladies are gonna have a great time. And give it their all at the Town Hall in Manhattan on the twenty-eighth. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion. Mrs. Jackson.
I move that we approve the overnight field trip to New York City for Spectrum.
All right. It's motions made by Mrs. Jackson.
I'll second.
Mr. Pizano, second. Any further discussion?
Question.
Yes.
You're trying to raise funds at last minute. Has anything been raised so far? Do we know how it's?
I, so the, you know, we have the Plymouth Schools Music Association. I think you're aware of that, Mr.. And so they have been working for us already in fundraising. That's going very well. I also have just good feelings and have had lots of conversations. I think because it's, you know, last minute, it's kind of a, you know, a special thing. I, I'm confident that the families will not pay much.
That's what I was hoping to hear.
I can't, I can't really say right now because I'm not sure. But I, I really feel confident that there's going to be a, a good amount of, a good percentage of the cost raised.
You have to ask that in Dr. Swanson's absence, right? Anybody else have any questions? All right. Seeing none, we can go ahead and vote.
We need some music to play.
What's during votes? I'm sorry, what?
We need some music to play during votes.
Oh, right, the Jeopardy.
We should have a department work on that.
As long as it's not the Jeopardy soundtrack song. All right. It looks like it's been approved. Six approved and one absent. So congratulations.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have field trip, grade eight field trip to Milan, Italy. Is there someone here to present?
Yes, I'm going to ask Dr. Powers, if you haven't heard, our newest doctor in the house. Congratulations to Dr. Powers and Mrs. Reardon.
Congratulations.
Here, sort of step the stage and I'm going to turn it over to the two of you, if you don't mind. Dr. Powers and Mrs. Reardon have been instrumental in this project before. You may recall that we had a trip in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year to Milan, Italy. A lot of planning went into that. We had the opportunity to host students here in the fall of that school year. And we had a group of high school students that went to Milan. So this trip is specifically for grade eight students for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year in April. And it's a host exchange. And I'm going to turn it over to, we'd like to kick it off and talk about it a little bit.
Sure. They, Collegio San Carlo in Milan reconnected with Dr. Campbell and had said that they wanted to start the exchange again. So we, Dr. Campbell had spoke to us. We've had a few meetings. Mr. Palladino and Mr. Murphy as well. Collegio San Carlo has identified the seventh, eighth grade, but our current seventh grade as the target population for that exchange. So that's what we would be exchanging. It's a one-to-one like it was in the past. So our students would host students from Milan in October. This October is in a few months from now. And then our students would travel to Milan and stay with those same students and families in April. Just like we did, unfortunately, when we did this exchange prior, our middle school students hosted, our high school students traveled, and then we all know what happened. So if you don't know what happened.
That day.
COVID happened. So that's, I don't know if you want to add.
Yeah, I would say that it's, it's pretty much the same model as we had last time. The additional perk is that should a pandemic happen, we now know how to handle that part of the trip. But it is pretty much, it, it's not fundamentally different than the model we were using last time. We're excited to actually go all the way through that process with the middle school this time.
Great.
So we shared a couple of sample itineraries from the last trip in the packet with you this evening to see, you know, what it was like for the students that came here as well, what it was like for our students to travel there. It's a wonderful opportunity. Collegio San Carlo is a very spitable school, lots of resources, lots of opportunities for students to really get a wonderful cultural experience, that one-on-one. But there's nothing like the, the host family situation. And as you can see, the cost is very inexpensive in comparison to other trips because of that host exchange relationship, because we're really looking at travel expenses and then incidentals.
The only thing I would bring to your attention, which came up sort of as a surprise to us last time. So we're prepared for it this time, having been the individual who traveled there. We had a lot of host families in Italy who don't stay in Milan over the weekend and that prefer to travel to vacation homes outside of the country because the Alps and Switzerland and other countries are so close. You're nestled in the northwestern corner of Italy and so it is very close to other countries. We did have several students who traveled outside of the country in those circumstances. So I would just bring that to your attention because I would assume that there is that possibility of that happening again. It's a little bit different time of year, but there's the possibility. And how we handled it last year, how we handled it prior. I was notified, I stayed in the country. I mean, our teachers also, because they were hosted as well, they also stayed. So I stayed within the country, you know, in the event of emergency, that kind of thing. But I just want to bring that to your attention. And we did have families fill out additional paperwork and notify us. And in that case, the families, you know, the, the families take possession of the kids passports in the country, which is a little unnerving, but they kind of need to have it on them when they're staying with the host families.
Ms. Mrs. Haywood?
Oh, thank you. So when the students went with the host families, are you saying chaperones went with, like?
So our chaperones, there were five chaperones on the trip when we traveled to Italy. There were four teachers and myself. And the four teachers were also hosted by teachers and families in Milan as well. And so they too, just given, we had some teachers host teachers. And we actually had two families that hosted teachers and a student as well. It just kind of worked out that way. And they had houses that were large enough. And it's, in Milan, it's, because it's in an urban environment, the housing situation, it's difficult to sometimes host. And so many of the teachers, many of the faculty of Collegio San Carlo were unable to host teachers, which is why families took on those two teachers.
Any other?
And all of this, of course, is, is shared in written approval and authorization with families prior to these trips.
Yeah, everyone, everyone knows in advance, yes.
We, and if, should this trip be approved, we have a, an informational meeting the week that we get back from April break scheduled for families ready to release that information, to do an orientation for families. We're looking at capping this at twenty-five between the two middle schools with the idea that we would host approximately the same.
Did you have any vaccination requirements? I know when we were dealing with the Shishikahama, it wasn't a country thing, but some of the families might have required it.
Uh, we, we haven't delved into that yet.
Nothing's been shared with us today.
Keep that in mind because that's, we, we don't, we ran into that with our Japan trip. Great. All right. Any other questions? Mister?
I did, but I'm good.
And then I'll take a motion. If anybody has.
I'll, I'll move to approve the trip as, as presented to Milan for next year.
All right. And seconded by Ms. Badger. Any further discussion? All right, we can go ahead and vote. You have the slow one today.
Yeah, sorry.
That's all right. There's always one. All right. It's, not unanimous because Dr. Swanson's not here, but it's approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you both.
That's, that's the date of my son's wedding, so I couldn't even volunteer to shepherd him if I wanted to. All right. Next up, we have school improvement plans and Hedge Elementary. Kristen Wilson. Hello, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm Kristen Wilson, the building principal at Hedge Elementary School. And I'm here to present our year one plan for the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five school improvement plan cycle. There we go. I'd like to thank our very tiny but strong school council members. Katie Daye and Maggie Wright are our parent representatives. And Abigail Greenwood and Nicole Manfredi are our staff representatives. Last year, we spent a lot of time going over our mission and vision statement and revising it. And we really embedded the, trying to represent the community of learners that we have at Hedge School. So you'll see that our inclusion, equity, and diversity is embedded through our mission and our vision. And as we go through, as I go through the school improvement plan goals, we've embedded those components into our three goals for the next few years. It's going to be hard for me to go through what we've been doing at Hedge this past school year, but I'm going to try to keep it brief. We're working really hard over there. We've had a wonderful year. It's been nice to, to start having a normal year, if you will. So I'll start a little bit about our demographics and then I'll go right into what we're going, what we're doing right now for our goals. When I did the, the, the slides, which was a couple of weeks ago when I put them together, at the time, we had two hundred and twenty students, which is twelve classrooms. So we have two classes at each grade level, K through five. So that means that every room in our building is used. All twelve classrooms are used, so we have an average class size of eighteen. Currently, at the time I built this slide, sixty-nine students qualified for English language instruction, which is about thirty-one percent. And eighty-nine of our students, English was not their first language. So that's about forty percent of our population has a home language other than English. One piece of information I really wanted to point out is that middle slide there, which comes from our access data, which is the, the English proficiency exam that our state requires. It's conducted in January and all of our students that qualify for English language learning take that exam, even if they opt out or they have just arrived. Or if they're in kindergarten and they're not provided, being provided instruction, they still take the exam. So in two thousand and eighteen, we had fourteen students take the access exam. And then in two thousand and twenty-two, we had sixty-two students. So that really shows the significance and the increase of our English language population. And we're thrilled that we have two E S L teachers right now to help support our children. So a lot of the work that we've done this past year and we will continue to work on is how are we going to provide education for those students and continue with the rigor of the curriculum? So we've done a lot of work on that. So what's new and exciting? Well, we're at a young one hundred and thirteen years this year and we're still going strong. We are still a school-wide Title One walking school and we have a new playground. So there's a picture down there, which is our community. So there's a picture down there, which is our community build. I know Lewis was there helping us out. We had a great, great time building that playground. We did collaborate with the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project this year, which we'll highlight a little bit more as I go through redesigning our English language instruction. I'm going to talk more about that. We have our PBS house system that we are piloting this year. We have lots of new staff. We have some younger staff on board. It's starting to, it looks a little different this year with the addition of our two classrooms over the last four years. We have some new people there. We started our after-school clubs again, and we're very excited to have our Three Piggy Opera and Coffee House this year and increase our parent engagement component by academic celebrations, which I'll highlight as we go through. So academic achievement, improve the outcomes of all learners through an inclusive and equitable education. As you know, we've worked a lot with the Department of Education over the last seven years in regards to universal design for learning. So our school already has a philosophy of providing grade-level standards to all students and providing students with tools to access that curriculum. But what we're finding this year, in the last couple of years since the pandemic, is we have a different type of learner. So we have learners that are not proficient in their first language due to disruptive education over, through the pandemic. So we've had to try to identify ways to reach learners that are not proficient in their first language in early literacy skills while still maintaining the high rigor of grade-level standards. So what we've done with our collaboration of Teachers College and just by best practices is we've moved our English language instruction into the classroom. And we are working with our English language teachers and our support teachers to take the current grade-level standards and embed that with our English language instruction. So it, it connects the vocabulary and the experiences that our English language learners are experiencing is connected to the grade-level content. So it's not two different topics that are isolated, it's all combined together. So it makes more sense for learners. We've also had to really look at the phonics acquisition for our students because typically, when children have come to us, they can read in their first language. And now that we have students that are not able to read in their first language, we're teaching them to read in English. And so we've had to do more phonics work with our English language learners than we have in the past. So working with Teachers College, they really gave us some great tools and assessments that we can use to track how students are progressing over time. We've done research and identified those phonics skills and sounds that our learners have, have not had experience with. As you probably all know, we have mostly Brazilian Portuguese students from, in our EL program. And there's some sounds in Portuguese and, and English that are not the same. So we can focus on those sounds in, with the children. We also, things like long vowels makes it challenging for kids. So we've, we've done some research so that we can target our instruction to the needs of the students. With that in mind, we've revised our RTI program where we are trying to keep the kids, again, in the classroom as much as we can. And so we've, instead of doing intervention four days a week for a lot of our students, we've reduced it to two days of solid intervention to fill gaps, and then two days to work on current grade-level skills. And we are seeing success with that model. And then if students aren't making the progress that we would like to see, then we'll add more intense intervention to it where we might pull them into a small group four times versus two times a week. So being a school-wide Title I school, it's a benefit for us to have that additional staff to be able to do that. With that, we've been able to use the STAR math test to help us identify those gaps. We use unit assessments, and then we can use the Bridges Intervention Program, which has been a great asset to our, our math program. The other thing that we're noticing, and I was talking to Dr. Campbell about this earlier today, is because we have so many students in the early literacy stage of development, we need more books, and we've been purchasing more early readers, and we're going to continue to get, to get more. And now that we have a large kindergarten group as well, and kindergarten typically are reading like our ABC books. People are stealing from our kindergarten, so we had to purchase some more books for them. We also increased our library with Title I funds and purchased $7,000 worth of library books for the library. So we're very excited about that as well. When we look at our data, we were, we were excited, yet still leery on our MCAS scores from last year. Thinking about our learners, it's really important to, to think about, if you are a English language learner, it's, takes the average child about six years to catch up to their peers. So academic achievement, passing the MCAS scores, passing the MCAS exam is challenging for a lot of kiddos. But for some of our learners, it's even harder. So we really focus our energy on the student growth percentile. And when you look up there for the ELA MCAS from last year, we were really pleased with our students at 51.9% for a student growth percentile. So even though our achievement scores are not where we would like for proficiency, the growth percentile is, is right where it needs to be, in a little bit above. And then looking at our BAS data, which is our benchmark assessment data from this school year, we were thrilled to see in this past January that we've, we're moving up, we're at 56% of our students are meeting or exceeding the expectation, which in 1920, before the pandemic, we were up at 61%. So we were nice, we're pleased to see the progress that we're making. We, of course, want to see more, but we're, we like where we're going with our ELA right now. And I put some pictures in here. Working with the Teachers College, they've come out, they come out six times a year, working with our two different cohorts, K2 and 35. And they actually, we all teach together. And up at the top picture is our, we're in the K1 pod, and the people on the floor, all of our teachers, teaching with kids, doing some of the work that we, we do some research, we do some planning, and then we do some teaching with each other. And then down below is we're working in a fifth-grade classroom, and those are our teachers right there on the floor. So they've really embraced the work, and it's been nice to see them implement it outside of the visits with, with our staff developers. Math was, we're plugging along with math, and we have a lot of work to do with math. We have a lot of young staff, like I said before, so they have taken advantage of the math workshop training. We have our first-grade teachers, second-grade teachers, and one of our new fifth-grade teachers attending the trainings this year. We would like to see some increased scores on our math MCAS exam. Again, all students have to take the math MCAS exam, no matter of their language proficiency. If you've ever looked at the exam, it's very wordy. So it's, it's not just being able to calculate and, and do fractions and decimals, it's also being able to, to read the language. Although we can have it read to them, it is in English. So it is a challenge for us. So looking at our math scores and our science MCAS scores, we are not where we want to be. But when we looked at our Winter STAR math data this year, we did see an increase in progress with our students in January. So we're anxious to see how our students perform in May on the math MCAS exam. One thing that we've been working on is rigor and stamina with our kids, and Teachers College has helped us with that in reading. And we just finished grade four MCAS today, and very, I'm very impressed with the amount of effort our students took towards the exam, taking a lot of time to, to do well. So hopefully, hopefully that will show in their student growth percentiles this spring. It's, oh, there we go. Sorry, I have to see if I skipped ahead too far here. All right. So thinking about social emotional learning with our, our students, our goal is to develop and implement a network of social and emotional support for all learners. And we are a responsive classroom school, and with all our new staff, we have to continue to refine and reincorporate those practices in our school environment. So we have, we did have a staff developer come out from the Center for Responsive Classroom, and do an assessment of our practice, and highlighted some areas that we need to improve on. So we've been working on, a lot of it has to do with feedback with our students, asking higher-level questions, and then also just redirecting, reminding, and helping students outside of the classroom, recess, lunch, cafeteria, continuing to work on those areas. One thing that we've done to help with that is we have set monthly meetings with specialists, which is our art, music, PE teachers, because we have found that sometimes when students go into those less structured areas, some of their behaviors can not be as positive. And so we're working monthly with our specialists as well as our para-staff for lunch and recess. So we have monthly meetings, we review responsive classroom practices, we talk about different problems, we come up with some solutions, and we found that to be very effective. And a lot of our discipline has reduced this year, which is great for me because that gives me more time to work on curriculum and instruction. So we're excited about that. We are piloting for Plymouth the Big Brother and Big Sister School Program, which is very excited. I've been in Plymouth for about 20 years in education, and I've always wanted a Big Brother, Big Sister program in Plymouth. And so we are working with them, we have mentors that come into our school weekly. They've had mentees, and they have lunch with the children, they go out in the playground and have recess with the children. So we're still working on getting more mentors coming in, but we have about 10 students right now that have a Big Brother or a Big Sister. And it, it's been, it's been wonderful. We continue our Peer Leaders Program with our Rotary Club interact, and they're working with their own mentors, mentees in the building. So we have fifth graders working with kindergartners. I have some really cute pictures of some of the kids on the playground that I'll show you later. They do our food program, they're delivering the meals to the classrooms on Thursdays. And whenever we have a project, they're out there. They were raising money for the animal shelter, and they had a cocoa popcorn fundraiser in the front. It was very successful, they did it two days, and then they were able to go over to the shelter and deliver the money. So they're very active, they're a small but mighty group. We also are looking at our child study process, and we designated two days a week to meet, to discuss student need, which has been helpful to have those days on the calendar before the school day. It starts at 8:50 when the children start arriving, so we're trying not to pull the teachers out of the classroom as much. But we do it during that arrival in morning meeting time, so that's been helpful as well. Our panorama data was, has shown, is saying that what we're doing is working. And we have, teachers do feel that students are able to regulate their emotions and manage themselves. So we have an increase in some of our scores this year. We found that after the pandemic, it was very challenging for students to, to be back in school again. And now that we're seeing students get back into the habits and, and being able to attend and, and put their best effort towards their learning. Our, this, one area for our student perception for our fall data this past year is the teacher-student relationships. We really pride ourselves on the fact that our students feel that they have a confident adult in the building that they can go to if they, if they need someone to talk to. So we're very pleased that this survey showed that, and that our students are feeling more safe at our school than they, they did before. It will be interesting to see, I, I do find that in the springtime, sometimes when the, the spring fever comes, the spring data can show that sometimes there are some little issues going on, and that school safety sometimes is a little lower in the spring. So I look forward to seeing if that data is showing that trend that I noticed last year. But right now, we're pleased with how students are feeling in their school. Our staff work really hard to connect with, with children, and that's part of the responsive classroom practice. Community and family engagement, goal number three, engage all stakeholders to support the success of all of our students. So these are some fun things I wanted to share. We did a multilingual family night this year. So we, we are fortunate to have a bilingual para-slash-school receptionist. We did combine a position to create a full-time position to have somebody in our building that speaks Portuguese all day long, and so Mrs. Santana has been a fabulous asset to our building. Little things from somebody's crying because they forgot something, and she's able to help us to important meetings, to phone calls, to school safety. It's really a game changer having her in the building. So I want to thank the school committee for supporting that for our school and our central office staff. So we were able to do a multilingual family night, and we, I, I spoke, she translated, we had, we had food, we had pizza. We were able to answer questions, talk about school, talk about attendance, the importance of attendance, being, coming to school on time, different ways parents can get involved, report card times, just different things that, coming new to our school and new to our country that some folks just might not know about, that we are trying to give them a venue to, to feel comfortable and answer questions and bring the kids and, and have a, a good time. So we did that, and then we did an MCAS family night this year. And David Christopher, who was a Hedge Kid, by the way, he talked about the Honor Society for the Plymouth North did the Escape Room. So we took that night, and we invited our grade three, four, and five students to attend the Escape Room. And then I invited the parents in with me to do an MCAS night. And we got on the accountability website, we, I showed them how to go and, and go through the school report card because it's not user-friendly unless you know how to get through the different tabs. And then we got on to the MCAS practice test, and they actually got to sample the test. Some got very competitive and wanted to be better on the math test than others. We also had them explore the, the inquiry-based science assessment that they're, the fifth graders are going to take, and how challenging that was. That was comical to watch some people do that, too. But again, it gave another opportunity, formal yet informal, for parents to come and ask questions and, and feel comfortable being in the school and learning about what their children are up to. And I talked a lot about the importance of the students to really try on the exam. So that was a success, and I hope that Plymouth North does that again for us because it worked out really well. This year, we were able to re-establish our recess volunteers. So we have a group of parents that were trained, and they're in the cafeteria, they're on the playground, they're helping engage the children. We're excited to have that, we're excited to have curriculum celebrations again. We just had a grade-two poetry cafe. Our kindergartens did superheroes readers parade, and they had parents in, reading with the parents. So again, we're just trying to get everybody into the school as much as we can safely to embrace the curriculum and make, and make the students have a purpose behind some of the work that they're doing. Our newsletters, we use some more so we can translate our newsletters, that's been wonderful. Having Patricia, all my communications, as, as simple as a flyer for a half-day to our, you know, our cafe, our poetry cafe, we can communicate that in the home language of our students. So that makes things a lot easier. We have a bilingual ed TV crew, which I hope are highlighted at the ELLIS this year. So we're able to have students that are doing some of our ed TV episodes in both languages, which is really fun. We have our Zion readers back in the building. We've extended it through second grade, so kindergarten through second grade have volunteers from the Zion Lutheran Church. And they have collaborated with a new church in the community to have, come in and read with our students on a weekly basis. And lending library is back in full force at Hedge School as well. So being our little school in the community neighborhood, we, we really are busy with our families. The playground was very busy today on this beautiful day, which is nice to have that. One thing we did this year is we went to the Courtyard Park Museum. We took our third graders over there today, which is, not today, this year, last month. We walked over, and it was wonderful for the kids to experience really how North Plymouth came to be in the early 1900s. And they, they showed the kids the maps of the Courtyard Company housing, and so the kids got to see if their house was, was a Courtyard house. We, we got to dissect rope, we learned about the history of the community, and it, it worked, it was wonderful. It went very nicely with their social studies curriculum. Up in the upper right is our kindergartners doing their superheroes parade up there on the right. And over on the left is our annual beach trip to the Nelson Park that we got to do last year, we'll do that again. Down left is our Red House Hedge Party. So part of our PBIS revision is we have houses, and each child is assigned to a house, and they're earning Hedge Kid tickets for positive behavior. In the house with the most Hedge Kid tickets, and they also get points for perfect attendance. They get to have a party for about 20 minutes on a Friday afternoon, and that was a dance party that we did in the gym, which was really fun. And on, we wear our house colors, so it's black, red, green, and blue. And then we did our, our cafe house and our art exhibit last year. Those are two of our little girls down in the bottom right, and we're going to do that again this year. The kids love to do. love to do that. Here's some more of our family events, in the upper left-hand corner is our multilingual night that I spoke about earlier, and down in the bottom left is our Super Readers Kindergarten Parade, where our families read with the children, they got to bring their book bags and read all of their Just Write books. In the middle on the bottom is our Charlotte's Web Celebration, we had barn babies come into the school, and now, the kids got to play with the little babies. We also had the Sharras Farm the day before, lots of animals. Over to the right is Lending Library, and if you go up to the top right, that's one of our grade-three celebrations for working on the multiplication facts, and then in the middle is all of us dancing at our annual Halloween event, family event. Again, we have a very strong community. Those are, over in the left is the Peer Leaders, working with our younger students on the playground, and then down below, they're working at their cocoa popcorn fundraiser in the bottom left. Of course, we had our annual Thanksgiving feast, we brought everybody in the gym again, so we didn't have to do two sessions, and pizza, we had pizza that one year, we were hybrids, so we were back in the gym, very exciting. Up at the top middle is our seniors from last year, it's probably one of the largest groups we had, and all of those kids I had at Hedge School. So, I love to see the yellow, to see all the Honor Society students that have come our way in our small but mighty crew. Up at the top, we had some Irish dancers come in for a cultural arts performance on St. Patrick's Day, and one of our students performed with her group. And then, down the bottom right was our Veterans Day, that's one of our grandmothers, who is also a veteran, and we had a celebration for our veterans for Veterans Day. That's a little bit of all of the things that we're doing, I tried to be quick, but I thank you all for your support, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for Ms. Badger?
Thank you so much for the presentation, as always, fabulous, and it's so nice to hear how your EL students and everybody is, you know, you're coming together, it's not just like a separate thing, it's important to the community piece. But, I know it's a question that's come up here across this table a bunch of times since our budget discussion, but did you experience that bump this year? I know you said we had 62 students in, was it January or December?
Last year.
Yeah, yeah, last year. So, we were just curious as to the bump up, I mean, I speak in "we" because I know I've heard it from several members, so we're just curious to see what you may have seen this spring.
In regards to new students coming in January?
Yeah.
Yes, so, we had, it's what we found this year is when we, when students came in January, as you know, the school year ends in December in Brazil, and then students come, we had students come for a short period of time and then move to other communities. So, we've had about 15 students just kind of come and go, and ebb and flow. So, we did see an increase, not as huge of an increase, but we did see an increase in students come.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? No? Great.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Federal Furnace Elementary, and Stacy Perry, welcome.
Thank you. Just press the top button?
The right arrow.
Oh, wait, hold on.
Once you get you going.
Okay. All right, good evening, I'm Stacy Perry, the principal at Federal Furnace Elementary, and this is year one of our school improvement plan. I would like to thank our council members, we have two classroom teachers, Nicole Burke and Liz Gamo, I have our school psychologist, Rachel Bates, and I have a Title I teacher, Joanne Axon, and then, for our parent representatives, we have Ryan Patnod, Marlene Sturdevent, Stafford, Lisa Maguire, and Kristen Smith, so I'm very appreciative of all of our members. This is just a little bit about our demographics, we had ebbs and flows, but about 413 students this year, 77 staff, we are about 25% special education students, our EL population is a lot smaller than Hedge, we have about 8%, which gives us a half-time shared EL teacher between here and West Elementary. Our economically disadvantaged population is about 39%, which allows us to be categorized as a Title I school, which is great, and we have five Title I teachers that work with us, and we house one of the sub-separate programs, the Intensive Learning Center, and that is three classrooms with 22 students. And our vision at Federal Furnace is to empower all students to become lifelong learners so that they can be responsible citizens, and they, our teachers, work really hard to, you know, instill these things in our students. What's new and exciting, so we have been very busy, a picture that you see right here is we had guest readers, we had lots of our esteemed guests over here come in and read, we had police officers, we had lots of kids having their parents in, so it was really great to bring in a fun event for literacy. We also had March Madness, where we had, just like the basketball tournament, we had a tournament of books, and every classroom got to read the different books, vote for their winner, and we are now, we don't know who the winner is, but we have, we're down to our final two, so we will find that out this week. We had 20 students participate in robotics, which was really great, it was a great showing for Federal Furnace, we had a group actually be able to successfully get their robot to do what they wanted, and all the other teams were really close, but we did have one that made it. We had lots of students with their artwork in the Youth Arts Month exhibit, very proud of them, we had an author visit, which was phenomenal, we had, we were awarded a grant, I had a teacher, a special education teacher, Andrea Blackwell, I thank her profusely because she filled out the grant, got us the grant, and she was able to get it, so every single student was able to visit, and he would, on the spot, create a picture, and then create a story around it, it was amazing. We had our really great One Book One School Literacy Night, just like Hedge, we were Charlotte's Web, so day one, we had two pigs, a couple goats, two ducks that were just fighting the entire day, a couple draft horses, and it was a great way to like kick off the event. Our nighttime event, when we had the family in, all of our staff participated, the family enjoyed all of the games, and then, the next day, the kids had a treat of having two pigs, we had a really large pig and a baby pig, so we like closed the event with something really fun. And then, the Children's Business Fair, we had 33 students from Federal Furnace participate, and I thought that was a really great turnout for us. We have a care club now this year, and they are doing a really great job, so they have a recess patrol, where they go out and they see if anybody needs somebody to play with, and they work on playing with kids during that recess, so periodically, they go out on their patrol, and they also have, with our all-school meetings, they have led one of our all-school meetings during Black History Month, and it was like really great to get them up because of more student leadership. Something that we are doing this year is Positive Call Home, so teacher, anyone in the building can nominate a student for a whole bunch of different reasons, it can be academic, it can be through our roar behavior, and if they're just doing something, that should be acknowledged. We randomly pick four kids, we sit them, I'll show you a picture in a minute, we sit them at my desk, I clean my desk off, they sit, they grab my phone, I take pictures of them calling home, and they share with their parent what they did really well, made lots of parents cry, it's really a great program. Our band orchestra and chorus are really active, and they have performed for the school many times, which is nice to see those concerts coming back. We had lots of winter enrichment clubs, we had chess, we had kindergarten through second grade fitness with Mr. Pease, it's always a big hit, Legos, 3D printing, an art club, music club, and a book club. And then, my soon-to-be really big nature's classroom, I only have six beds with nothing in it, no soil or anything, but that will be big, hopefully by the end of the year, we'll get that unveiled, and then each year, grow and grow and grow. So, our first goal focus area is academic achievement, and really, this is around using the workshop model in all of the curriculum areas, all of the content areas, and we are meeting as a staff through our grade-level meetings to look at data, and this is where we're looking at our star data, math, benchmark, bridges, it's really great, like I said, we have five Title I teachers, so between our Title I teachers, our CTLs, we're able to provide a lot of interventions for our students so that we can get them where they need to be, because we still feel like we're feeling the effects of COVID in our time out of school. We had a very successful literacy lab site for every grade level this year, where we had our math coach come in, and she'd model a different lesson in a particular topic that was helpful for the grade level. The teachers in that grade level got to just be observers and watch and listen, and then they'd come back together and debrief, and then she'd come back another time, and they would try it again, so it was really successful. Every grade level got to participate, and we got really great feedback, so we are continuing that for next year. There's been professional development for the workshop model used in math as well, and that is our focus for this year and for the years coming forward, so the professional development has been very helpful. Common planning time in our schedule is an area that we're focusing on, and we're trying to increase that for next year so that we have our grade levels have that common planning time as many times as we can throughout the week. I did mention our author visit, that was a really great time for the kids, just to see, like, he showed us a picture from when he was a second grader, and he said, "Do I look like I was going to create a book with this picture? If you just keep trying, you can get better." It wasn't "practice makes perfect," his message was "practice makes better," and I thought that was a great takeaway. And then, our child study team's been very active, and that's using all of our data in the data meetings to see where our kids are academically, socially, emotionally, and putting interventions in place. So, here's some data, I chose this particularly because I thought, what a great snapshot of ELA and all the work, although it's my first year at Federal Furnace, I have to give kudos to Mr. Harold and Deuser, because the growth in ELA is, it's really great, it's over 60% in all of those areas. Math for us is not quite as high, but it just shows where we need to kind of pinpoint some of our interventions, so we're going to really focus on math, and that will come about with our small group instruction. This for me is an area where I am very proud that we are making strides in absenteeism, but we have a long way to go. Every month, we are in contact with families that have 10% or more absences, and I will tell you, I have a lot of letters that go out. So, although we're making progress, this is definitely an area that we need to continue. We are working very closely with Mr. Janulowicz, and he's meeting with families, and we're partnering together, trying to encourage everybody, we want your kids, you know, we want them with us. For goal focus area number two is social emotional wellness, and that is creating the safe and supportive learning environment, and caring about the relationships in our building, but also caring for those outside of our building as well. The picture shows toasty piggies, so around the whole Charlotte's Web theme, we did a community service project this winter where everybody brought in socks, and then we donated those to different places that could benefit from them this winter. Our care club, like I said, is really active with the Buddy Bench and the Recess Patrol, we do administer the panorama surveys, and like Kristen had mentioned, they give us a lot of information, they give us information on how the kids are feeling, how teachers are feeling, you know, and so, it's a good starting point for us to be able to see the whole picture of a student. We have all-school meetings, which I think are really great, we try to bring every single student together with the teachers once a month, and just so that we can have a morning meeting together, we can do something fun together so that we can build a community. And we are implementing a "you belong" box, so that kids have a space to, if something they feel like needs to be addressed, they're not really sure how to do it, we want, our message has been at our all-school meetings, you belong, whoever you are, you belong here, and you need to make sure that we're, we need to make sure that we have a school that everybody feels that, and if there's areas that, or people that don't feel that, we need to look at it, and we need to figure out what we can do so that everybody in the building feels like they belong at Federal Furnace. This is our roar behavior, and you will see a kindergarten class to the right, first, there are roar buckets in the classroom, they're piggies, and they earn the coins or the animals for demonstrating the roar behavior, when the classroom fills their bucket, they get a classroom incentive, then the grade level can get an incentive, and then we can do a school-wide incentive. So, this is really great to focus on the positives that the students are demonstrating, and like I mentioned earlier, this is an example of, along with PBIS and our roar behavior, we have the Positive Call Home, so we have a couple things going together, and you can say, "They're all at my desk right there, and they're calling mom or dad, they have a script, we take a picture, they get their T-shirt, and then, we send that home to the parents," and it's been a really great hit. Goal focus three is community engagement, and we have a great PTA, they have put on a lot of events, we've had the Spooktacular, the North Pole Event, Bingo Night, the Charlotte's Web Night, we will be having an ice cream social, we'll be having something for kindergarten, Field Day, and then, in order to get everybody's input, because not everybody can attend all the events, we did send out a parent survey, and we got a great response, and now we're looking at the survey to see how we can improve moving forward. This is, I feel like, just a great picture of our school, so you have Mr. Pease on the right, he's being dressed up as a snowman in a relay race in front of the entire all-school meeting. That is Ms. Tessitore, now Mrs. Wade, my assistant principal with the pie in the face because she wanted to motivate that child, so she gave him incentive, if he did X, Y, and Z in a month, if he met that goal, she got to, he got to pie her, and he won, obviously. And then, it shows the staff, just everyone chipped in for our One Book One School, everyone dressed up. The picture of the tree I wanted to put in there because that highlights Mrs. Wynott, our art teacher, who is amazing, and she transforms our school into whatever we need it to be. It was a barn for One Book One School, the entire building just transformed into a barn, she creates just a quick display for third grade because they read Wishtray, and then, the upper-left corner is a picture of, from the family event, and I think that shows like we value that, we want families in, we want us to partner together, and then, I put Meadow, Meadow's the baby pig that came in, and the kids love that. And our last one is equity, diversity, and belonging. Care Club is a big piece of this goal, however, we've had a few other projects, we had the mural projects, where we're working on getting murals throughout the building that just represent our school a little bit better. Our walls are very beige, and that has been one of my top priorities, is to get some color in there, and then to get some murals that just are, just liven up the school, but have a diversity lens on it, because I think that's really important. We did have a photo voice project where fifth graders were able to, they had cameras given to them, and they were trying to show their best self in pictures, and the unveiling is coming up in May, and you're all invited to that. So, that's coming up, and I'm really excited to see what the final project is, I really only know that it's really their best self in picture, so I'm excited to see that coming. We do have, Mr. Melcher, our PE teacher, has done a unified sports, unified sports program, where our students in the ILC come once a week, and then, students in fourth and fifth grade, a handful from each of the grade levels, come and work with the students' ILC, and it's really great, and they do, they were doing gymnastics last week, it was a great opportunity for the fourth and fifth graders to take on a leadership role, the students in the ILC absolutely love it, so it's a really great program, so I want to thank Mr. Melcher. And again, like I mentioned, the Care Club did the all-school meeting around Black History Month, and it was, they did a really nice job. And so, then, where are we going? So, for us, for fiscal year '24, small group instruction is going to be our focus, and that will lead us right into RTI, and how do we get some interventions in place so kids can succeed, and that will be tied into our MCAS as well, so that we can focus on math. We are going to be looking at our classroom libraries, because we feel like some are somewhat outdated, and we want to make sure that our libraries that are in the classroom represent the students that are in front of us, so we're going to put a lot of effort into first figuring out what we have, and then kind of seeing where we should go with that. We will continue our PBIS and our Positive Call Home, and we want to continue bringing the community together. the community together. We're thinking for our next like, community event, we want to have a focus around something math-science so that we already have the literacy event, so we want to add that next year. And then my big pet project is Nature's Classroom. In my grand scheme, my, my vision of this is to have kids learn about where food comes from, to then bring it into the cafeteria so they can try it and then hopefully those items end up in their lunchbox versus things that are in bags and boxes and things like that. So that's my big plan down the road. Any questions?
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? No? That means you did an amazing job.
I just wanted to say, I love the idea of the unified sports at that level because I feel like when you integrate kids at that age, it becomes more second nature, you know, like it's just what they're used to. It's not a new, you know, it's not something that's different already, you know, it's just part of their environment. I think it's such a great idea.
And they're so comfortable with it. And that's great. And I think that's, yeah.
That's, that's fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Great, thank you. All right. Next up, we have application for Renew America Schools Grant, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you, Ms. Avery. So I brought this before you before to share this good news. So the Renew America School Grant is an opportunity, excuse me, for us that we've been working collaboratively with the Town Grant Writer and Mark Reel, who's in charge of sustainability for the town of Plymouth, as well as Christina Renaud, who's been instrumental in this, to seek a grant through the Department of Energy that could really transform self elementary school, make it a, of energy-neutral building. So some of the things that would, are part of this application, and we've been encouraged to go to the next phase, which means to submit, and gotten feedback already. So it would be a new geothermal system install, mechanical system upgrades, roof replacements and repairs, window replacements, wall paneling replacements, complete A D A upgrade to the entire facility, both in and out, solar battery install and all of the other associated costs. It's a significant project which would total close to $22 million. The grant covers the majority of that, but we would be looking for funding from the town, about six to seven million dollars if the entire project was approved. Of course, this, this work would take place between two and five years. It's not something that is done in, in one summer, I think, that would put us all over the edge to try to transform all of that. But it's a, it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity. We're in the final stages of submitting the grant, I believe, right after the break. It's all due, Dr. Blaisdell?
Very soon.
They want it done within the next few days.
Yes. So what we've been doing is getting, yes, they have timelines that, that, they're great. In addition to the application, we've also been getting support from communities in the Upper Cape area because we see this as an opportunity to be beneficial not only to the town of Plymouth, but to Upper Cape to be a potential shelter. So we, we're trying to show that it, it goes beyond the town of Plymouth here. It's an opportunity to really bring something that would be great for this, this region. We have, in addition to submitting the application, we've been seeking letters of approval and support from the Select Board, which I went before, a couple of weeks ago, and received their support, the Building Committee. We've also received letters of support from both state representatives and Senator Moran. And we're here to get your support as well and I'm sure that, I know the answer to this, but with, should you support us seeking this, we'd be asking that the committee allows the chair to, to pen their signature on a letter which we will have written for you.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? I can take a motion. Ms. Badger?
I move that we, we give authority to Ms. Avery to author and sign a letter on behalf of the school committee in support of this project. Is that correct? Language?
I know we had a hard time.
Yeah, the language is fine. Looking for your support, a letter of support.
Thank you.
Mrs. Haywood?
My second.
Oh, second by Mrs. Haywood. Any further discussion? All right, we can go ahead and vote. All right. It has been approved.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up, we have policies. Dr. Rogers, did you want to?
I'm actually going to turn it over to Dr. Blaisdell.
These, I have two policies. They actually come to the business office for these two. The first one is fundraising activities. What we've done within central offices is made an adjustment in regards to where this goes. So the policy adjustment and subsequent form really just looks to move where the approvals go through and the process goes through. So the first change is, is in 5.0 on the second page and it's just changing building principal to school business administrator because we track all the summary, we track the summary net gross receipts and so forth. And then the other change on this particular policy is just really on the form, which is on the very, very bottom. It used to say Dr. Rogers, but now we're changing it to school business office within 30 days. Ms. Haywood, was there anything else that I missed on that one?
Ms. Badger?
I just, I had just one quick question and, and again, I, whatever. You can just say, Michelle, it doesn't matter. But where we put the date on the top here, March 28, 2021, does it matter that we have a date? Because at the bottom, we then have the when it was approved and when it was seen. So it just seems like an extra piece of information that is unnecessary. I didn't know if we were changing the way we were doing all of our policies by putting that up at the front.
Well, we are changing the format, but we don't have to have the date on the top if it's at the bottom.
Yeah.
Just for consistency?
Yeah, just for consistency's sake, yeah.
Anyone else have any questions? Mr. Bazzano?
Yeah, I don't have any issues or questions on the, on the policy. It's, my question is how we're following it because like, I was reading through it and it says like, you know, annually, the school committee will receive a summary report. Unless I've been asleep the last two years, I've never seen that report and it also says that we'll like, receive notification of every fundraising activity that's approved. Never seen that, so, yeah, so I'm, like I said, I like the policy, but I don't believe that we're following it, so.
So I think, yep, so part of, part of us sort of closing the loop was that I was getting some forms and the business office was getting some forms and so we didn't sort of close all of those gaps. And I think obviously there's been a lot of transition in the business office, so this just keeps it consistent in one office and one person sort of managing the fundraisers. So hopefully this'll help.
Yes, yeah, the goal is to address what I'm talking about.
Exactly.
And then we'll annually, we were figuring in June, we would, at your June meeting, we'd have an annual report of all the, of all the fundraising activity. If there's another way that you'd like us to do it through the year, so you've got more regular updates, we could, but there would be an annual one in June.
Now, we did, we used, we did have discussion about it sometimes if we noticed that multiple schools did things or if we noticed there wasn't a good return on the investment, you know, return, we would, we would comment. I don't know, do we want to see it more often?
I think some periodicity beyond a year, I don't know, it shouldn't, doesn't have to be every meeting, but I don't know if it's monthly or quarterly or something, but.
I don't remember. I think it was monthly. It was a standing.
Do you remember how we got them?
It was standing because it was a spreadsheet that we didn't even look at really. I mean, we looked at it, but it was like, does anybody have a question?
You can be part of the agenda.
Yeah, in the consent agenda, yeah, something for the consent agenda.
Yeah, so perhaps more of our cyclical, like a quarterly submission. The, someone who, the fundraisers used to come into my office and then, it's a lot, but the, the challenge was, we wanted to make sure that we got the, we got the net receipts, the gross and net receipts back from the school in a timely manner. And sometimes it would take a little bit more than a month, so we're constantly trying to retrieve that information.
A lot of times, we had like, nothing in that part.
Yes, and it's, it is, and we have hundreds of thousands of dollars of, that, that our schools and our, our clubs and our sports teams and our P T As are raising the benefit to schools. And we've had lots of conversations in the past, I know, about the return in investment and some, that's a touchy one because it's not our fundraiser, it's a P T As fundraiser and some of them, while they don't have a lot of return, it's more of a annual celebration and they, they happen to get some money out of it. Some of them are very deliberate and they're, you know, they're doing, the biggest one that they're doing now, the elementary schools, is the color, the runs.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, the fun runs.
Fun runs are making tremendous return and, and really helping to invest in a, in a lot of projects. But we certainly, as Dr. Blaisdell said, however, the committee would like to see that information coming back in a, in a regular way to, to know what the schools are doing, who's doing the fundraising, that sort of thing.
I think it might be important for us to know when the receipts come in too because they're, if there's any issues with that.
Yeah, and that was part of that spreadsheet, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so this encompasses all school entities, so whether it's a sport club, you feel like you're just revving off.
Any fundraiser should come, come through and really looking at, trying to look at the appropriateness of the activity as it relates to students, right? And that's what we really look at doing. No door-to-door sales, for example, I believe that's in the policy. We don't want students engaging in certain activities for the, for the sake of raising money.
And it's, one of the things that comes up quite a bit is raffles. So if there's a raffle involved, it's, I send it back until they send me the raffle permit too, so that, that's.
I was going to say, they need to get permission.
Yeah.
That's excellent.
Just changed the word.
All right. Any other questions?
Somebody.
The fundraiser for you.
So this is an action item if we want to, Mr. Morgan?
I'll make a motion to approve the policy, let me get the number here.
Nine point one.
Nine point one, with the edit of removing the date at the top of the policy.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Morgan, second by Ms. Badger. Any further discussion? All right, we can go ahead and vote. Oh, that was fast. Are you catching up?
Yeah.
All right, it is approved. And next up, we have the multi-function school activity vehicle use policy. That's a lot of work.
And I'm going to, Adam will take this one over too, but this is, there was no previous policy, so this is a brand-new policy. So there's quite a story with this one. You can leave my name out of it.
I will leave your name out of it. And I, I think also, in, in talking to Dr. Rogers, if you notice in the top right-hand corner, this has the letter version and I believe, working with Dr. Rogers' office, the policy subcommittee is rewriting, so it would move into the letter identification versus the number.
The file line with W A S E.
Yes. So this is, if you've looked in the parking lot, you would see that big white bus. So that was ordered and it, it's called the multi-function school activity bus. This bus will allow the district to have, to run field trips, different activities, athletics, when there's 14 passengers or less, plus the driver. So 14 passengers plus the driver, the vehicle seats a total of 15 people. You are, we do not pay someone to drive this bus. It's part of their, they volunteer to do it as we pay, we already pay them their salary. So it's not, we cannot pay them an hourly wage to drive the bus. It's something that they volunteer and say, "Yes, I'll drive the bus. I'll drive the, the sports team to," the coach will drive it to their, to the match. A lot of, the music, V P A is very interested in using it, N T V's very interested in using it. Some other trips that we do are very interested in using it. Because this bus was purchased, we then had to write a policy that went along with allowing us to use it. This is different than the vans that we have. So those vans and this are two separate items. So this policy goes through the different pieces, rules and responsibilities of the driver. What they do is the drivers apply to my office, they have to submit a copy of their license and so forth to my office. And once they're approved as a driver, then they also have to go through some training. There's a video that I'm working with N T V on to create, there's a, there's a procedural manual that they have to read and then sign off on. And then once they do all of those things and they can apply to use the, the bus on the specific dates and times and so forth. So again, it goes through the rules and responsibilities of the employee who can drive the bus, what they need to do, talks about obviously cellular phones and handheld electronic devices, accidents and how to report an accident. Talks a little bit about making sure that they're in charge of, of the passengers on the bus, making sure that they all have, wearing seat belts because that bus does have seat belts for all, all riders. It tells them in regards to pre and post-trips inspections, that they need to look at the bus to make sure all the lights are working, tires are inflated and are correct and they have to make, there's a checklist in the bus that they have to follow and go around the entire bus to make sure everything is working and then do the same thing afterwards as well. They have to check the bus. And again, and then it talks about while transporting students. And this is the policy and then the procedural manual that's not part of the policy is a little bit more in-depth and it goes through specific steps and so forth. It goes through the procedures of how to become a driver and, and also then follow up and make sure, how to reserve it and, and all the steps that go along with it. So it'll, it'll be a great addition to the district in order to allow us some flexibility when we don't have the ability to, to hire a yellow bus or we're transporting a smaller group of students.
All right. Any questions? All right, Ms. Badger?
I always have a question. So the cellular phone and handheld electronic devices piece, if use of cellular phone or handheld electronic device is needed, employees should pull over. So if I set up my GPS and, and I can't use a GPS, is there a GPS built into this vehicle?
There is not.
How do they know where they're going? I wouldn't know how to get anywhere.
That's, that's something that I think we're going to have to address at a later date.
Okay.
Because in talking to, for a student, they're dealing with a lot of that as well because the, the state of Massachusetts has certain rules for C D L drivers and so forth. So we intentionally left that out until such time that some laws and regulations change. So I assume that as time goes on, we'll revisit this, but I figured, leave it out for now until we could address it later.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Haywood?
I, so we went by, we went through this piece by piece, looking up Mass General law because there was, I, I think I brought it up, to tell you the truth, in terms of that GPS portion, but some things were specific. Yeah.
I just figured there must be a reason, but I was like, no, I wouldn't be able to get anywhere.
I agree with you.
I agree.
I would not want to be finding my way to the Reggie Lewis.
My car anymore like I used to.
No. No, I can get in the general area and see it, but I'll be able to get there, yeah.
And most districts that have one of these at this point in time, I know it's in here about out-of-state travel, they don't even allow it out of state. Like it's a, if we own it, you don't even take it out of state. So that's what we would live by too, because even though it's, it gives you some wiggle room and you, and Dr. Campbell and, and you would have to approve it, at this point, we're saying, saying no. Just, I, I see this evolving over time, but this is really just the initial so we can get to use it.
Use the pretty bus outside, right? I'm assuming it's the one outside?
Yes, it's the one outside.
It's just painted, it looks great.
Yeah.
The, I imagine this is going to be a big hit. It's a, you know, it's a, it's a great addition to the district. Is this written such that if we ever get a second one, this will apply or are you going to need another one? Just, because the way it reads, it says, "The Plymouth Public Schools Multi-School." So I was wondering if we just change like one word, does it make it generic or is it generic enough already?
I think it's generic enough already, personally. We did have a discussion in policy about just a general vehicle, vehicle policy and that might be something we come back and revisit because we have a lot of other vehicles. We were just focused on this, but I think it's general enough that.
If you get a second one, this will cover it.
It'd be fine, yeah. I think a second one will probably be useful a time, once it starts being used, but.
Yeah, I imagine it's, yeah, it's going to be popular. You'll, you'll have the job of figuring out how to, how to assign it.
Okay. All right, any, I'll take a motion if nobody says.
I'll, I'll move that we approve the policy as presented.
Mr. Bazzano moves, second. Mrs. Jackson? Any further discussion? All right, it's approved. Thank you. All right, next up, we have superintendent's report. Dr. Campbell?
Thank you very much. I wrote my notes in giant font, I still can't see it. I have my reading glasses, so. Evening, everyone. Few things, and you've heard some of these, these events this evening from a number of people who've come forward, but just a few things to update you on March 2. On March twenty-first, we had two exciting events going on. One was Youth Arts Month. It was the debut for the artwork, which we've had as an annual celebration. Gosh, I don't even know how many years that's going on now, but literally hundreds of pieces at the Plymouth Center for the Arts. We had hundreds upon hundreds of families going through, looking at their student artwork, and it's a great display. And the, what I really love about it is that the kindergarten work is mixed in with the high school work, so it gives you an opportunity to sort of see that continuum. But just amazing, amazing night, wonderful to see so many people out celebrating visual arts. And at the same time, so prior to going to that, we had our robotics, robotics rally, which started off at four-thirty, I believe went to about seven-thirty, it wrapped up. So many teams, the students did a phenomenal job. We had just, just a great opportunity for our students to engage in STEM. Have an opportunity to see the engineering lab in our programs at North High School. And it was great to see the students working in teams on the stage in, in the pack, in front of their families and friends and, and everyone. It's just a wonderful night. And just so much goes into that to prepare not only the, the robotics, the teachers that are running the robotics, but Mrs. Riordan, number of staff, staff at North High School, so many people. So just a great thanks to all those folks. Had the opportunity to participate in the PFN's Getting Ready for Kindergarten evening. That was the day before that, the thirtieth. And we had about sixty-five families that, that joined, which was good. We've had, we've ranged between sixty and ninety over the last few years. We had about sixty-five families that joined in. It was a great opportunity to hear from one of our kindergarten teachers and for me to sort of welcome them to the Plymouth Public Schools as a family and just, you know, talk about the importance of that relationship, the student and family relationship. But just also a great opportunity to, to learn what kindergarten's like for, for their children and, and answer any questions. So we had a lot of questions that we were able to answer academically and, and otherwise. So it was a great evening and I really look forward to that every year. We've had so many events going on, as you've heard from our elementary principals, one book, one school. We had so many one-book-one schools going on a week ago. It was just incredible, just the transformations of our schools between, you know, I'm trying to remember which ones we had. We had, we had two of, we had two, the Federal Furnace and Hedge had the same one, book-one school. We had.
Lily Wonka.
Wonka and the Chocolate Factory. We had the BFG at South Elementary, where you were welcomed in the cafeteria by a twelve-foot BFG whose arms stretched out and students could literally sit in his hands because of the cushion that was put out. It was just incredible. The transformation was awesome. And just so many, again, so many families were able to go out and, and take part in that, so it was great. And also, the same evening that all of these events were going on, Nathaniel Morton did a differences day during the day, as well as in the evening for families. So it was an opportunity to really learn from many speakers, adult speakers who came in, to focus on understanding differences. We had, we had someone who came and spoke about living with Lee Syndrome. We had someone that came and talked about living with Down Syndrome. Another woman who came and talked, and talked about, spoke about living with dwarfism, able to answer questions, talk to students. And then also an opportunity for, to meet with families in the evening. So that was a wonderful event and really appreciate the efforts of our guest speakers and the school for putting that on. Want to congratulate South Middle Schools Drama Club. Also, they had Beauty and the Beast Junior, which was very well-attended, a great production. Again, thanking the cast and crew and the volunteers. We have so many families that come back and volunteer, whether they're North or South Districted families that just help out with the performing arts and it just another great event. DC spoke about the Be the Light Benefit Show that happened on the thirtieth. They raised over six thousand dollars. And again, those proceeds go to Lucy's Love Bus, which helps with families struggling with pediatric cancer diagnosis. So a wonderful event, which raised a tremendous amount of money. We had a successful town meeting. Seems like a long time ago, but it wasn't really that long, long ago, but we had a successful town meeting. So the town has appropriated advisory and finance recommendation with the eight-hundred-thousand-dollar supplemental appropriation for personnel, should the school department need that. Dr. Blaisdell and I will be meeting with town administration. We're confident that we will be needing those funds and we'll be acquiring those as soon as we need to do that. So we, we'll, once we go through the hiring season, we'll have a better sense of when we'll be requesting those funds, but we'll be setting up a meeting with the town administration about that. Let's see. And next week, you may have seen this through social media, but Ed TV will be hosting their fourth annual film festival. So if you have an opportunity on the twelfth, oh, it's this week, oh my gosh, I wrote this last week. It's this, it's this Wednesday at six-thirty. If you have an opportunity to stop by at North High School, I think they, they, Ed TV said they had fifty-five, over fifty-five submissions. So students had an opportunity to put together films. They had, the theme is Crossroads, so they had it connected to a crossroads. This year, the film festival is broken down into three categories, narrative, journalism, and music video, and they also have a photography piece. So it's a, it's, it's a wonderful, as everything that Ed TV does, it's a wonderful, wonderful celebration of student film and interest in film. So if you have an opportunity to make it, I would encourage you. And then, just another plug, and I'll talk about this in a little bit, but the Health Safety and Mental Health Awareness Fair on the twenty-ninth of April. Be a great opportunity on Saturday, the twenty-ninth, from ten to one, but we'll also have the Hope Day Walk right before that. And then, after April break, the Wednesday on the twenty-sixth, PIS will be hosting QPR, Question, Persuade and Refer, which is Gatekeeper Training for Suicide Prevention. Again, would, would welcome, would encourage anyone to, to participate in, in that evening as well. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have the school safety presentation.
Yes, so this is, I did a similar presentation not too long ago, unfortunately. You know, I think as, as we, we all know, that there's been way too many tragic events that have happened in this country, in various states, across, across this country, regarding school shootings and school violence and, and whatnot. So it's really important, I think, to share with the community, again, and continue to share our efforts around safety, security and, and what we do and what we continue to do, you know, not only as superintendent, but as a father of three and an uncle to five that have gone or are in this school system. It's, you know, as a parent, I think the, the, the one thing that you want to feel comforted by is that the school keeps your kids safe, does everything they can to make them feel safe and supported. And so this is something that we take, we certainly take very seriously. So I want to go through some of the things that we do, the components of our sort of safety protocols, and we talk about that. But the model that we've used for years, and it continues to evolve in our practices and, and the enhancements that we do, is really this emergency management cycle. So we're looking at, you know, prevention, preparedness, respond, and recover. And I'll get into all of that, but prevent, obviously, is to avoid, what do we do to avoid incidents from happening in, in the first place? And as an example, would be monitoring main entrances, external locks, that sort of thing, to keep intruders out. Prepared is like the process that we have in place to prepare for incidents. It really is, this is something that needs to be continuous and we need to continue to evaluate and make sure that we're bringing people together that, that collectively do this work, so that we can, can continue to be critical of our practices and how we're preparing. Respond is what we do in those moments to respond and minimize harm if there's a particular incident that occurs. And we all have roles and responsibilities in that, and I'll get into that more. It's really requires detailed coordination from all of us, both internally and externally. And then the recovery piece, and we're talking about all kinds of events here, but recovery is, is multifaceted too. And we're not only about reunification, but it's getting back to school. It's the social-emotional piece, the mental health piece, could be physical damage. There's a lot of things that this model entails. It's not all about these tragic events, but it's about lots of emergency situations and we have to be prepared for all of them. One thing that I think that has been, that I'm very proud of here is the, the, the school resource officer presence that we have in our schools. We had, we had school resources, we had four officers up until last year. They were dedicated to our secondary schools and the middle school SROs would go between, they're sort of adopted four elementary schools each and would check in. With the support of the chief, we've expanded two additional SROs. The police department is still down fourteen officers, and that's important to know. So even during a shortage, and they have a shortage at, at the police department of officers, we've had that commitment to continue to provide additional supports as school resource officers, SROs, and we did that last year and we continue to do that. But they're really critical, the relationship is really critical. They're really a part of the team, particularly with the administrative team. They're, as you can see in this photo, they're, they're trying to make them a fabric in this school, as they're truly a resource. And they've been, they've been wonderful. And they're also many times the first responders to certain situations in our buildings. So collaboration, when we talk about like emergency management, collaboration and coordination is really key in this. And in Plymouth, we have a district emergency management team, which is really our safety team. And we meet, and we have a meeting tomorrow. We meet monthly typically. Sometimes we meet more, sometimes we may not have a meeting depending on what's going on. But this is a committee that is very well-represented. It's been going on for many years. I want to say probably about thirteen, fourteen years. When we started like the second year here, third year, we, we got this in place and it's when we started putting in some of the drills many years ago that we have. But, you know, in addition to many, the members of my team and school committee representation, we have our emergency management director. We have the fire and police are well-represented. All the school resource officers are represented, administrators. We also have some of our mental health supports and we, we have the transportation company in there, among others, and we bring other people in. Related to that, we have our school-level crisis response team. So this is, so, you know, it's important that each school also has their crisis response team at the building level, all right? So it's gonna be your administrators, it's gonna be key people on your team, if you have an assistant principal, you know, your nurse. It could be an adjustment counselor or behavioral health clinician, your custodian and maintenance staff, again, depending on what the situation is, to help respond to crises and the, and the schools need to know who those teams are. But it's really important and they're really help to sort of take the district initiatives and apply them to the school, because every school is unique in size and composition and, and that sort of thing. So there, there's sort of the main persons. And we also have school safety plans, so taking those, you know, the, the management systems that we put in place at the district level, applying them to the crisis teams and then the school safety plans, again, targeting the, to meet the particular situations while drawing from the district's emergency guidelines, okay? Really looking at the characteristics. You're not gonna respond to a situation at Hedge Elementary the same way you would at North or South High School. And just knowing your, knowing your environment. So when we talk, you know, preventing hazard and threats is really our ultimate goal in trying, in, in emergency management, you know? And really, there's a few things that you look at there. Positive school climate is critically important, knowing our students, making them feel safe and supported, but also creating a culture where they feel comfortable sharing and we know all of our students well. It's really, really important that we know our kids. I can't say that enough. It really is, I think, is one of the most important things we do. The design and maintenance of our buildings and grounds is critically important, whether it's the inside, the outside, lighting, cameras, the doors, what we do to try to, as best as we possibly can, to prevent incidents that could be prevented otherwise. And then just security measures and overall safety, so. And I said this already, school climate, really building the foundation for safe and supportive schools. It's really, I'm not gonna read all of this to you, but it's really a founda, foundation which builds a sound system. There are many models for building and maintaining positive school climate, which are listed here, and there are others that I probably haven't listed. But no matter how carefully we design a school to ensure safety, the school isn't safe unless the school community uses the safety features as they're intended every day. So, you know, some of the basic measures, limiting access to one main monitored entrance, our Raptor visiting software, which is our visitor badge, where we're doing a background check, checking people in, the ability to lock our classrooms, video surveillance. These are just some of the measures, any examples when it comes to prevention. Another thing that we've done recently, as part of our assessments, you know that we've done, we did our facilities assessment in twenty-one. We, we've done an assessment with AI Three. We've also, and again, through safety, and this started through our safety committee, council meetings, is we've hired Armored One and we have actually have a partnership with them for next several years, and they specialize in school vulnerability assessment and preparedness training. We got some great feedback right after that, the most recent shooting, for that matter, and what went wrong, what they did well. There's a lot that they did well as a school, but there, there's always room for, you know, things to look at. But, you know, so we are in the process of further evaluating all of our buildings, all of them, regardless of the age, with Armored One for security vulnerability, inside and outside. So some of the examples that we're looking at here is our school grounds, bus areas, parking areas, evacuation areas, the building perimeters, the main entrances, the vestibules, the lobby areas, main office configurations, classrooms, lighting, tree, line of sight, a whole host of things. And we'll get reports on all the schools and look at that information as we go after funds to try to make improvements or looking at existing funds to make improvements to our current prevention and preparedness model. So it's great data that helps us to really look at our buildings, regardless of the, whether it's the state of their new high schools that we have or some of our aging buildings, what can we do to improve our current conditions. So, you know, as a district, it's, it's critical that we not only have a plan, but we're prepared and we practice and continuously improve our practices. We used to have, just, we had a lockdown drills before and we've moved on from that. And that's included, but we have an ALICE protocol, as you all know, which provides our staff and students other options in various situations, depending on the circumstances. And it's important that we, that we review that. It's part of our mandated trainings and continuous conversations. And we have our officer, Lieutenant Manfredi has gone in to all the schools, continues to do that. He's doing it in the spring again. And he also comes to our new school, our new teacher orientation, and we do it with the new staff as they come in. So again, the preparedness and the practice, and it's more sophisticated, as you all know, what we do with students at the secondary level and how we drill and practice at the secondary level. So, you know, again, our detailed response procedures is having, you know, assigned roles and responsibilities during incidents. We have an emergency management protocol for a number of incidents, which we've, again, put together with our safety council and how we respond to certain situations, you know, and some of them are listed here, how we evacuate, shelter in place, when we would institute a lockdown or use ALICE protocols. Could be a fire, gas leaks, that sort of thing. Having procedures for specific types of incidents that allows our staff, our administrators, and our emergency response personnel to know what we're all doing. So we have role clarity in those situations and we continue to evaluate that, but also continue to review that with all of our staff and our, our response personnel. In addition to that, there's also, you know, information in our manuals in terms of where medical emergency supply kits exist. We have maps of school buildings and grounds for key personnel that need that, our emergency response flip cards, which are in every space that would, would staff and students would occupy. How we account for students, and we're, we're actually gonna be looking at a more sophisticated way of doing that for re. How we account for students and we're, we're actually going to be looking at a more sophisticated way of doing that for reunification, which I'll talk about in a moment. Orientation and training for everyone, everyone needs to participate. And that's part of our mandated training and continually to review that and the drill and practice. And again, in a developmentally appropriate manner. The information that we're going to, the way we're going to drill with a high school student is very different than a kindergarten student. And, and our staff know that because they're developmentally, you know, they're experts in, in their level. So response, response is really, you know, the heart of emergency management and it's when the emergency happens when we have to respond and decisions need to be made quickly, not only decisions, but who's doing what. And this is where we really need to make sure that, one, we know what our roles are, we trust each other in the process with police and fire, whatever the situation is, that we're coordinating, we're cooperating. And, and this is, we get better at this through drill and practice and continue conversations about that. Making informed decisions, you know, actions, take and need to correspond with the type of, and the intensity of the incident. Communicating accurate and appropriate information without causing alarm. You know, we want to minimize exposure to incidents, students exposure to incidents depending on, you know, the age of those students. So you know, without deceiving them, you want to share what information they need to know, if there's injuries or damage, depending on what kind of incident we're talking about. Keep unaffected students away from any incidents, any medical issues that are going on. So having protocols in place that's going to be mindful of our student population. And documenting, having documentation systems in place even when we're drilling. So when we do debriefs, that we can look back at that and get accurate responses and, and feedback from our staff about how those drills went, so we can be better the next time that we do that, whether it's our evacuation procedures or how we've communicated. Regarding communication, when we communicate, as you all know, during any intense period, our schools and emergency management leaders have to be ready to communicate. Our buildings are going to be in, you know, in the, in the event that something's going on, need to be mindful of what's happening at their school. The communication for any incident that may happen needs to happen in a very coordinated way, in a very effective way. And it needs to happen in one centralized way and that would be from our office. So whether it's through our, our, our social media coordinator or one of us, the information is going to come out from, from our office immediately, very deliberately and very specifically. You know, we've had, I'm just thinking back to nine eleven when I was still just coming out of the classroom and we had a lot of people showing up and try to, trying to just control that and to, to manage communications. We have a coordinated system in place, we use Blackboard currently and we can send out notifications to all contacts, all families. And we use that in a very deliberate way to communicate, you know, all things, but we would do that through our office. And really at the building level, it would, it depends on what level of, of incident that we're talking about, but really trying to centralize communication for critical incidents out of central administration. A new feature that I want to bring up is Raptor Emergency Management System. So Raptor is our, is our software that we use to receive people into the building. You give your, your, your license, we do a background check on it and we'll issue you a tag that has your face on it from your, from your license. Raptor has an emergency management system which allows us to respond to emergency situations in a very coordinated way with our staff, our administration and police, fire and other emergency personnel. We can use it to directly call nine one one, we can respond to crit, critical incidents, we can respond to incidents within the building that don't require police and fire. It may be an incident that would be handled within the building. It has a lot of features which I want to show you that we will be rolling out. We've rolled it out to our administration, we'll be rolling out to our staff. We've met, Dr. Blaisdell and I met with the police chief, the fire chief, we talked about it at, at safety and we're going to be rolling out with all their personnel as well. We want our staff to get comfortable with it first. It has the ability to go directly to dispatch at the police station. There's a lot of features here that will allow us to really enhance the way we respond to emergency situations. So this is sort of a screenshot of, it's probably my phone, yeah. So you can see this, this is, so it's, I'm not going to set it off, I promised Dr. Blaisdell I wouldn't because we'll have a lot of staff from this building that will get concerned because they have it on their phones at home. But it's in, I don't know if you can see that little R there on my, my phone, that's the Raptor app. We'll have people download that, they can also get it on their desktop if they chose. These are the four screens, the main screens that it has. So you see the first screen there, the main screen, these are the critical incidents, the fire, a lockdown, a stay in place alert, missing student, evacuate. We can call one of these emergencies with a click of a button and it asks you to confirm it. So you have to swipe to the right once you, and I'll, I'll, I'll show you that without setting it off. So if I were to do that and, and call for, let's say there was, I saw a fire. Face ID to open it up for me. And I hit the fire button, I have to confirm by swiping. So there's, there's a second step there, so you're not going to accidentally do it. I'm going to cancel, but there is the screen, that's the basic screen, okay? You can see that, so we do that, swipe it, whether your phone's in sleep mode, it's, it's silenced, it will override that, make a loud screaming noise, give you the alert on your phone, just like an Amber Alert or, you know, emergency notification. You'll get that specifically from Raptor, you get a text message, you get an email sent to you. We get all of them, so any school, we're assigned to all schools as well as this building, key personnel, our SROs are assigned to all the buildings. We have other emergency staff that will be assigned to all the buildings and the school will be assigned to all the schools that they're a part of. But it allows us to communicate a critical incident immediately, get that information to those who need it so that they can respond. And within that, we can also, I can't show you this without actually engaging it, we can communicate internally more specific. So if you said fire, third floor at this, this school in this wing, you know, evacuate, you know, everyone else evacuate. You could send that message and have everyone out while you're calling nine one one and fire department is coming. Or you, you know, for all kinds of incidents, you can give more information to everyone in a, in a, in a confidential way without having to get over the intercom because that's not always available to folks. And it's very helpful. Team assist is a lower level, as you can see in the main screen, it's a lower level of incident that wouldn't require police or fire or EMTs for necessarily. It could be a fight, it could be someone who's in the office that's irate and, and may, someone needs assistance. It could be, you know, suspicious activity, but we're not quite at the point where we're going to need, you know, the police. This is a way for the internal teams, those crisis teams that I talked about, the administrative teams, to communicate and get information to each other immediately. There's an emergency document list on there, so we can put all of our maps so that our, our staff, the emergency personnel will have, you know, digital copies of our maps of our schools, which will be clearly labeled so that when they're responding, because not all emergency personnel are familiar with every building. So they say, I'm going to A, you know, A one oh two, I know that I'm going in the front building because it's labeled A and I'm going down this hallway because we have the system in place. So it's creating again, more information and systems and, and something that they have available to them. So if they're not familiar with the building, they know exactly where to go. The last column that I have there is, is a drill, so we can do preset drills, whether it's a fire or lockdown or other incidents. So we can drill with this as well. We do drills without this, but this will be another nice feature for us so that if we want to practice in a, in a partial evacuation because of an incident or whatever it is, we can incorporate this app to that to really see how it enhances our practices. So again, this is in the early phases, our, we're going to be rolling it out with our staff. We wanted to make sure that our, our entire administrative team is very comfortable with it as those that have to help deliver that message. So we're at that place right now and we feel really good. So we're really, this is, this is very happy about that. Recover is really when you're recovering from an incident, we, we need to make sure that our plans incorporate that and people again, understand their roles post crisis. This too, as I said earlier, is multifaceted. So we really, what does it take to restore to a safe and healthy learning environment in a school? And again, we're talking about all kinds of critical incidents, but you know, taking into consideration the physical and psychological safety of our students and staff, you know, depending on the incident, there could be significant trauma. Making sure that we're, you know, working with mental health clinicians, we're working with professionals to help with whatever the aftermath may be for a critical incident that we've just responded to and we're now recovering from. Repair, restoration of the physical facilities and infrastructure, having systems in place for that, you know, depending on what it is. Could be a fight, we've had fires before and we've had, we've had floods before, we've had to deal with it at the high schools. And how do we restore and repair and, and, and plan for having systems in place? And we've had to do that, just as an example. And then regular internal and external communication, you know, making sure that, you know, and these are some things we have in place like handle with care. So we have systems if there's a crisis that happens outside of school in a very confidential way. We can send an envelope to children's teachers and, you know, Chris Campbell's name's on it and that's all it is. You don't need to know what happened, it's, you know, handle this child with care because something critical happened. And those who need to know, know, but just a way again, having systems in place to funnel information in a way that's going to help us recover from that. I'm, I also want to add that the Raptor app has a accountability and reunification piece, which will be the next phase of our implementation. So we literally, because we take attendance, let's say we had a fire drill or a fire and, and we evacuate the building. But I had half of Adam's classroom and he had some of my students and, you know, we had some visitors that came in and we don't know where they are. We literally can take attendance in the app and, and account for everyone and those who aren't accounted. So if Adam had some of my students, he can account for the students that he has. So in real time, it's keeping track of who has been accounted for. And then there's a reunification piece to it, so you have a system in place to reunify students with families and we can literally sign them out through this system and see who signed them out, when, to whom, and communicate that to, to all the families. So if both, you know, if two family members were going to the scene to, you know, to, to receive their child and I'm driving, my wife happens to get to the school before me, I'd get a notification, my wife picked up my child and was released at such, such a time. So this system is really, is helping at all phases of our emergency preparedness, so really happy about that as well. Another thing, you know, again, we can never be, we're always looking for ways to prepare and how can we make our buildings and grounds as secure as possible. So working again with the police chief and with Lieutenant Manfredi, we're, we're going to seek, we're going after a US Department of Justice School Violence Prevention Grant. This grant, you know, it has, excuse me, my notes here, because I can't see that far. It's, they're, they're, they've set aside up to seventy-three million dollars in funding for this and each award's a three-year award and it could be a max of a half million dollars that we could receive. Really to look at, and it's a cost share piece, but it's, it's about twenty-five percent. So looking and, and we can do that. So looking at, again, the Armored One assessments that we do and things that we know that we talk about improvement in terms of how we receive people, cameras, lighting, we've had conversations about tip lines. I know Mr. Pizzano, I've had conversations about that, I've had conversations with other folks about that. These are things that potentially we could fund through this as well. Looking at locks, lighting, these are just some examples, I put up there, hotlines, mobile telephone applications which we've, we've already purchased. These are approved, approved expenses within this grant. So we're, we're aggressively going after this, the grant application is due in approximately a month, like maybe six weeks. I'll be meeting with Lieutenant Manfredi to, to go over that in great detail. But we brainstormed a number of things that we thought we could go into this, I'll talk about that at safety tomorrow as well to see what other folks think, Officer, Lieutenant Manfredi has also given some suggestions. I think there's a lot of things we could do with that funding. So you know, I think, just to kind of sum it up, you know, we know we have to try to provide a safe learning environment within our schools and, and the planning please, piece, excuse me, is, is most important, I think, to our process. Not only planning for how to improve our facilities, but planning our prevention efforts, our preparedness and, and practicing those drills. And the partnerships, I can't say enough about the partnerships that we have. We're very fortunate to have great partnerships in, in this town. And, and those who saw this opportunity, this grant opportunity, reached out to us, they want to do everything to support us, to, to make our schools as safe as we, as we possibly can. And then unrelated but related, I just wanted to put another plug in for the Health and Safety Fair and the Hope Day Walk, which is on the twenty-ninth. But I'm happy to answer any questions regarding any of this that anyone may have. It's something that we can't stop focusing on. I think we're doing a good job. I think we can't, I think the piece that we, and we, we say this all the time to our, to our building administrators to try to reinforce with our staff, we can't, we can't get comfortable in our, unfortunately, we can't get comfortable. We have to make sure that we're, you know, we're not propping doors, for example, where, you know, the weather is warm, we're going to keep that door locked. Looking at ways to prevent people from doing that though, other key card access points so that people won't do that. But we, we have to be mindful of these things and we're, and we continue to, to work on that.
Does anybody have any questions, Ms. Badger, did you have your hand up?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say that I'm really excited to see that we, you know, the handful of years that I was on the safety committee, we had number of like fits and starts on apps and things to be reported back. And I'm just really glad to see that we finally found something that, I mean, we already, we already use Raptor in the schools anyways, so it's a great use of a resource that we have to the next level. So it, it's really nice because I know we did start a lot of them.
We did, we had a company which will remain nameless that didn't go anywhere many years ago.
A lot, we have for a long time.
Yes, this is a, this is a, this is, this is real, this is here to stay. We've already, it, it, it works really well and I think it will be very well received by everyone.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up we have retirement announcements, Mr. Trophy.
Yes, I have two retirements to share with you this evening. Michelle Butler from Mennett Elementary Schools, a grade two teacher for twenty-four years here in Plymouth. And we have Karen Runyon, a science teacher out of South Middle School. Will have twenty-three years and, and both will finish up at the end of this year.
Great, thank you, Ms. Badger.
On behalf of the Plymouth Public Schools, I'd like to thank these two individuals for their combined forty-seven years of service and wish them a happy retirement.
Thank you. Before we go on, I know I, I was supposed to mention this before the retirements, but we've had a request for a really quick restroom break.
Oh, it's okay.
Is it?
It's fine. Nope, it was before.
You just doubted yourself, I wasn't going to say who it was. All right, never mind.
We're moving now, we're good.
All right, letters? We'll turn that over to Mr. Pizzano. Sorry.
All right, we have a letter that I'll read on, on behalf of Mike Capel, the EPA Director, Director to the local Elks Lodge. So this is to Ms. Anne Marie Kelly and Michelle Mott, who I believe spoke at the last meeting or the entire meeting. On behalf of the Visual and Performing Arts Department and the Plymouth Public Schools, we would like to extend a sincere thank you to the Plymouth Elks Lodge number fourteen seventy-six for the recent donation of four thousand dollars. Your generous donation will help support our secondary extracurricular music programs. We continually strive to provide opportunities for our students where they can express themselves musically and artistically. We continually strive to provide opportunities for our students where they can express themselves musically and artistically. The Elks donation and your personal support greatly aid in turning these possibilities into realities. We look forward to sharing with you the opportunities that this donation has afforded our students. Once again, thank you. Your donation truly makes a difference for our students. Sincerely, Mike Cable.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have committee member reports. Does anyone have anything that they want to report, Ms. Badger?
Okay. So I have several things, but one that's really, really exciting. And I think we had our, at the Pilgrimage Collaborative, we had our first reading of the budget moving forward for next year. I think I mentioned at a couple of meetings before that we are in an unusual, wonderful circumstance where we have surplus budget of, I think right now it's like seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is not usually what we have. We've been, I don't know if lucky is the appropriate word, but we've been, we have been a recipient of a lot of students that need a little bit more help. And so we've got a huge surplus now. And so we did the first reading of the budget coming up. And, you know, we, a lot of the considerations that were taken in, you know, we've got that fourteen percent increase of this, you know, we've, we all know that story. And so it, the members all agreed that what can we do to make sure that we limit that impact on the district? And the hope is what we're going to do, it hasn't passed yet, but five hundred thousand of our surplus that we know we will have at the end of the year is going to be placed onto next year. And so that will allow us to freeze our tuitions. And, and then from there, we will also probably get a little bit of refund or credit as well. So we're just trying to be as, you know, with our, our windfall, which doesn't ever happen. And, you know, would love, love to see it happen every year. But be able to keep it so that our district doesn't have to spend more than it, it would normally if we did an increase. So that's my exciting news from the PAC. And then I just wanted, I know we already talked about the Willy Wonka, but I, they did such an excellent job. I mean, it was adorable. It was, I mean, just seeing the creativity. I don't know where people come up with some of these things. I was like, good for you. And then, what else? I wanted to thank Kim because I know she probably won't bring it up. But the MASC region, what are we, three?
Division three.
Division three, sorry, division three. Putting that together, it was really nice to see other members from other districts. And, you know, I saw, I met a PAC person for the first time in, in the flesh since we only are meeting virtually lately. So it was really nice to, to get that opportunity. So thank you for putting that in there.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I should say Ms. Avery, sorry. That's it, I think.
Great. Anyone else have anything? Mrs. Haywood?
I would just like to say, so I also attended a One Book One School at South Elementary. It was a big friendly giant. And it was wonderful. The school was transformed. It was a wonderful, wonderful event. And also went to the robotics rally. It's great as well. And my son's team was able to complete. Yeah. So it was, it was great. It was wonderful to see the kids being excited about the activities. So.
Awesome. Great. Oh, Ms. Badger?
I have one more thing I forgot to mention. I did what you did and I was lucky enough to read to Mrs. Martin's class and the last day of the month.
The list?
So I do. They, so I asked them what they would like. We read what they would like to see kind of done at their school. They would like their basketball courts fixed. They want both higher and lower nets. I was like, okay. They want a whole football and a whole baseball field. I was like, you're, a whole one. They were very clear. But they, what I really thought was really great is they want to have more handicap accessibility in their school. And it was one of the things that many of them mentioned, you know, like one young man had had a broken ankle and it was really hard for him. And he learned what it would be like if he, you know, had a disability of some sort. And it was just, we had a great conversation and once, it wasn't just about sports in it. It was, it was really great. And I, we didn't get anything about food.
No, that's good. We've got that covered.
They had just had snacks, so they were full.
Awesome. Is that it? Great. Anybody else have anything that they want to?
I too was able to go to the robotics rally and it was fantastic. It was my daughter's second year. But just seeing what they do and everything they introduce them to at the high school level was just phenomenal. I mean, they love it every year. And it's such a great exposure to see what's, what they're capable of, you know, going forward.
Great. Thank you. I, I just have two, two quick things that are, thank you, Ms. Badger, for the, the thing. I know that one of the reasons that as the Division Three Chair, I, I started that is because I know how therapeutic it is for us to meet with other school committee members that have been going through the same things that we have, especially the last few years. And we're hoping to do more of that. I also wanted to remind everybody about the, the MASC Day on the Hill. It's May fourth. It's in the UMass, what's it called? UMass Clubhouse. And then we're going to move over to the State House and have lunch. I know any of the, anybody that's been to these before, it's pretty cool. All the, all the culinary students come and provide lunch for everyone. And then we will meet with our legislators afterwards. We do have one visit scheduled at two o'clock with Representative Lenatra. I have a, I just sent them a reminder today, so hopefully we'll get more. And you do have to go on and register. There is a fee for it, which I don't ever remember having, but I'm sure that we could, you know, go through Ms. Daley. The other thing is, is I know Ms. Jackson, Mr. Pizzano and I went to the National School Board Conference. And it was great. It was, it was really good. We have a lot of information that we want to deliver, but we've kind of decided we're going to put it together in a presentation because there is some really good information. It, SEL and mental health was, seemed to be an underlying theme for the conference. MegaCon was going on at the same time in the same conference. And every once in a while, one of them would wander into ours and we would wander into theirs. And it was quite exciting.
Lucy got to take opportunity to go to MegaCon.
But it was great. I, I think it was good. We had some great keynote speakers. The first, the first general session opened with a unified cheerleading team, which was amazing. We saw some singers. We saw a steel drum band from a, from a school. So it was great. But we will get together and formally present that, hopefully maybe after the election or after the reorg. And that's it for me. Anybody else? No? All right. So next we have the building committee reports. Mr. Morgan?
Yes. So we did meet this Pat last week. We got an update on the fire stations. Fire Station Two, which is the one in West Plymouth, is going well. They're going to pour the slab soon, the septic's in, so that's progressing. Station Five has gone out to bid and the bids are over budget, so they'll have to go back to the drawing board there. No updates on Station Four. There really wasn't much going on with the school roofs, other than we paid for some bills. We did get a presentation of a ten-year plan from Lynn Barrett, from the Finance Director for the town. So we got a big spreadsheet on that. And there was a little bit of talk about the letter of interest for hedge and cold spring. We did talk about that briefly. That's about it. Unless, Ms. Pizzano, you have something?
Nothing.
Thank you.
Great. Next up, we have personnel reports. Mr. Chofey.
This evening I can share with you, we had one classified appointment. We received eight resignations. We approved five parental leaves. And then we approved four medical leaves as well.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have the approval of the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything that they need to have removed from the consent agenda? No? All right. See, and then I'll take a motion. Ms. Badger?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right. Seconded by Ms. Ca, um, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Catherine. Any other questions or comments? No? All right, then we can go ahead and, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, unfinished.
No, go ahead.
No, the unfinished and new business.
Oh, the unfinished and, oh, did I miss it?
Yes.
I apologize. Oh, yeah, let's, we'll vote on this and then we'll go back if that's okay. I apologize. I think I skipped a page somewhere. We'll go ahead and vote on the consent agenda. I was excited. I thought we got to go home. Almost. All right. It has been approved. All right. Now we will go back to, I have my apologies. To, oh, see, it's printed weird. Unfinished and new business. Does anybody have anything for unfinished business? No? Anybody have anything for new business? No? All right. All right. So with that, we are adjourned. It is nine eighteen and the meeting of the Plymouth School Committee is adjourned.